I would've just known in advance, I could've bought stuff at Amazon.
Yeah.
I was just telling someone that, it was like, oh, get that Harry Potter wand and just, there's enough kids that have magic ones, yours will eventually work. Just get the five dollar one.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we did like T-shirts up at these, well, we went and we did, we did some of that stuff, so we, I did not go into the replay thing, I'm spending a lot of souvenir.
Sure.
We got little hats and we got the bubble ones, so they were happy, that's what they wanted.
The bubble ones are.
Sent the whole day, that's, at every Disney event, Natalie just brought her kids to Disney on ice. And they were selling the bubble ones, they're forty bucks a pop, just at Target's.
I heard someone got injured.
Yeah, I texted her and she said that was at the other show.
Oh, okay.
So she went to the eleven o'clock show, but the three o'clock show, yeah, the skater, like, I think they got dropped or something, like, they got a lift.
Yeah.
Brutal.
Thank you for the new card.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
All this tech support for you.
I know.
Next for me.
That's why I invited you, Adam.
Background music come next. You get your walk-in song.
Councilwoman McCloskey's iPad.
You get your walk-in song, like at Facebook, you know, like a.
Right.
There's a place today, Bill is a day's department.
Alright, average lake shore setback, here we are. Your show?
It's my show. Oh, yes, well, third time, part three. More information here at the law code. So tonight, um, bringing back the average lake shore setback discussion. Uh, again, just the first slide is the definition is in the code as you guys have seen, I definitely can turn around here as we talked about. The next slide, I highlighted kind of the three setbacks that regulate, uh, lake locks specifically. So I have the lake setback, so a lake in a condo has the seventy-five foot setback, um, different on different lakes, but most common is the lake setback on Minnetonka seventy-five feet. Hardcover, which, um, the hardcover is different based on your distance from the lake, but for lake locks, it's a twenty-five percent maximum hardcover. And it prevents any improvements, um, and it regulates the type of improvements, uh, almost counted as hardcover. Um, also that we have the average lake shore setback, which we're talking about tonight, regulates, um, building location and then has some allowances for approach from another forty-two inches. With the average lake shore setback and the lake setback, we take the more restrictive of the setbacks, is how our code's written today. Um, also, a few weeks ago, I sent out, um, the ordinances of just the history of the average lake shore setback, so what it looked like when we adopted it, and then the changes we've made over the last twenty years, please. Um, this slide, again, this is kind of the outcomes we've been talking about, but the challenges and the results of the average lake shore setback. So challenges, this is a cumbersome ordinance, you saw how many words and how to describe this type of setback. It's challenging to both read and to apply the different law. Um, it can substantially limit the buildable envelope, the setback changes whenever a flooding parcel goes to project and then outside your control. And, um, common errors on surveys, uh, shoreline inconsistencies make the setback hard to apply. And then, um, specifically, I wanted to call out, um, twenty twenty-four of all of the variance applications that we received, forty-three percent of them included a request for an average lake shore setback variance. So it is one of our most common requested variances that you guys see throughout the year. Um, uh, the results or the impact of the average lake shore setback is, it has a, it limits massing away from the shoreline and can create a stricter setback and a higher level of protection to the lake, it's unique to every parcel, it strives to create uniformity, um, it protects neighbors' views of the lake, and it is a higher standard above and beyond the Vietnam model ordinance. So this slide just, uh, highlights those five options we talked about last time of trying to think creatively of how to address or maybe minimize our variance requests by tweaking this average lake shore setback. We kind of came up with five options. Um, the one we spent most time on talking last time was recalculating the average lake shore setback using a mathematical equation of the two neighbor setbacks and finding that average and applying it. Um, creating an exception over two hundred feet is option two, uh, next to encroach with option three. Just the limited season altogether was a fourth option, or no change at all and move forward as today's good option. So we did, um, some corrections, we did some analysis basically with option number one, and we calculated it to see if that would allow leniency or granting fees with, with applying the average lake shore setback to the locks. So twenty-six oh five Maple Ridge Lane is in addition, the average lake shore setback request is for a remodel in addition to the homes. The red line is the setback today as it's written. The yellow line is the seventy-five foot setback in this case, as it's all in Minnetonka, it's the lake setback. And then the blue line is the calculated average, um, where we took, here, neighbor one was at a hundred eighty-seven feet, neighbor two is at a hundred sixty-seven feet, so that averages to a hundred and seventy-seven point one, um, which is that blue line setback. The current average lake shore setback is a hundred and forty, so this is actually a more restrictive setback than how we apply the line today, creating a smaller building envelope. Um, this recalculation would still result in the need for variance, uh, for their project, it would alleviate the variance request. Um, the next one I brought forward was thirty-four hundred Fox, um, average lake shore setback variance request for a brand new home. The red line is the average lake shore setback as we applied it today as it's written in our code. The yellow line is the seventy-five foot setback. The green line would be the setback if we took out the neighbor's house, because it's over three hundred feet away. So neighbor one is three hundred and twenty-five feet from the water, neighbor two is a hundred and fifty-eight feet from the water. So we followed the green line, which is that hundred and fifty-eight, and applied it following the shoreline. And then the blue line is an average of neighbor one and neighbor two, which is about two hundred and forty, which creates that blue kind of L-shaped line. Um, we found that while in this case, the calculated average is less restrictive, creating a larger building envelope and more usable building space on this lot, it wouldn't result in, but we still think a variance would be needed to be able to build a house on this lot. It would alleviate the need for variance. Um, so this one, I thought, gave a good example, especially because it's right on a channel and a very neat kind of lot there. Uh, thirty-six hundred Casco Avenue, the new house, um, this, again, the red line is as it's applied today as it's written in the code, the yellow line is a seventy-five foot. The blue line is a calculated average that allows a less restrictive, um, a less restrictive line. So neighbor one's at two hundred and fifty feet, neighbor two is at a hundred and fifteen feet, so the average in the blue line case, a mathematical average, is at a hundred and eighty-two. Um, while in this case, it would be less restrictive, variances would still be needed, that still doesn't allow for a reasonable building envelope on the lot. So variance would still be needed in this case as well. Uh, a hundred, or five fifty-nine Hart Lane was for, uh, average lake shore setback for a deck reconstruction. Um, so this is, we're playing with smaller numbers on this lot, it's a little bit more uniform lot. But the red line is as it's written today in the code with the straight line, the yellow line is the seventy-five foot setback. Calculating the blue average, uh, averaging line, so I have the numbers here. Uh, neighbor one's at a hundred and one feet from the lake, neighbor two's at ninety-eight feet from the lake. The average line would then be around a hundred feet from the lake, and we kind of estimated that on there. Um, this deck reconstruction was for a small, I think it was like a two-foot encroachment beyond what they had today. So in this case, the calculated average is slightly less restrictive, allowing a larger building envelope. Um, and following the blue calculated line, this may have alleviated the need for a variance. So calculating it this way was kind of the one example out of what we grabbed where we might have relieved the need for a variance process. And then I think this is my last example here.
Cause the blue is the average, right?
So the red is the average today, the blue is the calculated average, that option one that we were considering. Yep, so this we think would have avoided a variance if we used the calculated average or that mathematical average. So kind of the last example I have, and I'm talking fast, but I want to make sure there's time for discussion. So we can go back to any of these examples that we want to dive into a little bit more. Um, thirteen forty Fine Place is a brand new house. The average lake shore setback is requested, um, for construction of this new house. The red line is the line, uh, based on our code today, the yellow is the seventy-five foot setback. And in this case, the blue line you can't even see in this scenario because it's off the property. So I have the aerial here and, um, it's completely behind the property. So, uh, the scenario does not show calculated average because the average was at a hundred and forty-seven feet, which is greater than the depth of the lot. So, um, in this case, it actually eliminated any conforming envelope. There was a little sliver on this too, at this parcel that was still conforming, but it completely eliminated, so going opposite of what we hoped would happen to be touched.
Because the house is, um, wait, it would be inside the seventy-five in there, right?
Yeah, so, um, neighbor one was a hundred feet, neighbor two is a hundred and ninety-five feet. And because the shoreline hits right like in a little inlet and a little bay, um, you have to buy a hundred and forty-seven foot setback if we were gonna do a mathematical averaging at a hundred and forty-seven feet, which is deeper than the actual lot is itself.
And then thirty foot rear setback.
Yeah, there'd be no.
Crosses over and one makes the building envelope.
Yeah, and so this, you would still need a variance for this lot, even if we were to change the, the calculated. So, outcomes. Uh, majority of the variances that meet practical difficulty criteria on, are on uniquely shaped parcels. Um, we saw that as we went through this process. Recalculating the average lake shore to be a measured distance using the flooding properties does not seem to have significant impact on relieving the need for average lake shore setback variances. Um, there was an internal discussion about taking a larger neighborhood averaging, so calculating the distance for additional properties on either side of the subject property into a neighborhood averaging could result in that setback being more uniform for the entire neighborhood. Um, this has potential to alleviate the average lake shore pressure on the parcel, however, it would require significant more staff time and interpretation to, um, identify that neighborhood averaging, which we currently require the applicant to identify those numbers. Um, if we want the applicant to identify the neighborhood averaging, that would take significantly more extensive survey work um, and cost to the applicant to survey that entire neighborhood to get those numbers, so, uh, just wanted to put that. There is another option out there, it would just be more intensive. Um, of the sample, of the samples provided, five fifty-nine Hart would benefit from recalculating that average to a strict measurement. Um, in this case, they were asking for roughly two fo- two feet closer to the lake for a deck expansion. So after conducting the analysis, staff finds that adjust fee, the current average lake shore setback regulation will not significantly reduce the number of variances requested each year. Um, changing the regulation would not result in fewer variances requested, and in some situations would result in larger setbacks places, placing at a greater setback burden, uh, of a property. So we kind of outlined two recommendations, which staff's recommending eliminating the average lake shore setback to make a more usable building envelope. The intent of the setback is to protect the neighbors' views, which we discussed, which isn't a goal of the council. And in my, I think the third page on the slide, we talked about other regulations regulating development on the lot, which is the lake setback and hardcover regulations, we can talk about how those impact different, uh, types of lots. Our recommendation number two would be to keep the setback as it is, with no changes. Um, if this is a direction council would like to keep, staff would like some discussion about the current practices of granting the se- of average lake shore setback variances in situations that may not fully meet practical difficulty criteria, such as, like, neighbor support alone is not enough to meet practical difficulty criteria, which some, some people get confused about. So we can, uh, have a, a longer discussion on that. And then, uh, I posed these questions for your discussion, which is, does the council feel changes are necessary to the ordinance? What's a, what's the goal of the council for this ordinance, is it being met? And then discuss the recommendations, um, and direct staff on any next steps. So I kind of breeze through that to make sure that it's in for discussion time, but I'd have you go back to any slides. I attached those history documents and just the kind of more, uh, described, uh, option that we talked about the last week as well as a quick reference.
Oh, if I could just add a couple things as you think about this, that Laura, uh, didn't call out, but if you look at the examples provided, they give a good, um, cross-section of common problems that the current practice has. So the thirty-four hundred, um, Fox Street is a, uh, a house that's on a peninsula, peninsula is a very difficult to apply this to. Um, and it's, it's also your property to a, a, um, a channel as well as a, a. And thirty-six hundred Cas- Casco Avenue, uh, you have a fly lot, which is, uh, which is impacting that average lake shore setback, um, which, um, there's, there's no way for that fly lot to be any closer, so, you know, what view of theirs are you protecting? Oh, and then the thirteen forty, uh, is a little bit of a bay situation, which is also hard to do, lakes are unfortunately not straight. Um, and the other thing, they have their oddity with some oddity, the other challenge with something like the thirteen forty Fine Place is, you know, that, that the comparison of the neighboring houses being used is actually on a different road and in effect in a different neighborhood, it has different, um, although they're technically neighbors in the lake, they're really different, different sets of setups of, uh.
On the road itself, yeah.
Yeah, so, I just wanted to throw that in there. It's all these weird geography things that make, make it different.
Well, I mean, we're unique, obviously, because that's why we're in Lake Shore City, right? Is it right there? But, uh, but obviously the ALS is really meant for consistent lake shore and can see, and then keeping the consistent lake shore consistent. To me, once you start getting into windy bays, it all falls into practical difficulties, and then that gets into the common sense, then I'm the council to solve that. I don't think there's a silver bullet, which I think you've demonstrated that, if there was, we would've probably found it. Um, so I'm hesitant, I'm hesitant to just say get rid of it, because that's what we've put in place for so long, and everybody's been used to how that works. Um, I, I might be able to in the future, but I would really hesitant to just say get rid of it, I'd rather just say, let's keep it, let's, uh, keep using the common sense of the council. I think there's things, there's reasonable things to talk about, like, are we protecting sideways views of, uh, of people over somebody else's property? I think that's a, 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 a great discussion point, um, is that, cause I don't think that's our job to help people's views over somebody else's property versus their s- straight up views of their own property.
Can we add that to the language and say, you know, the ideal goal of this?
That's what I think, that's what I think she wants in the discussion, because these would be something that you could put staff, you could put, uh, staff, give them the ability to say, you tell people, you know, the council's made it clear in whatever form, whether you've said it or do it, that, you know, we're not here to protect your view over somebody else's property, but we want to protect your view, we're not gonna let anybody build a house in front of your house where the lake is.
Right.
But to the side of it, but I still think it's still, comes back to the common sense mentality of the council, but that's why, you know, Lake Shore City, we have some just very unique situations that there's a silver bullet for, so.
I think if you were asking for goals or feedback, I think the goal would be to get it down from forty-three percent to twenty-five percent. Um, measurable is always a great way to start with a goal. I think you can outline practical difficulties, I think that'd be a great first step, um, so that we get less of those requests, because we've outlined what it takes to have a practical difficulty before it gets to us, maybe.
You could, you could even know what's not.
Well, we, we inherently just, by the way, are rezoned, we have inherent practical difficulties, we have two-way rezones and everybody's a quarter acre.
Right.
You know, all these kind of ones that are kind of built in, but from an ALS standpoint, um, I think if we can nibble at the edges of not worried about, say, we're not gonna worry about your direction and your view going sideways um, kind of thing, and give staff a little more flexibility in whether that works or doesn't work without having to bring that to us. Um, it may not stop people, because to me, it's like, once you give people an extra inch, then they just go another inch further. And it's like, you know, they're always gonna, and that's where in the end, it still is gonna come back to our common sense, because you're still gonna make recommendations and what, and how crazy you think their asks might be, or how reasonable. Uh, but it's still has come down to the common sense and things that we have seen over time, as I know, you've seen eight years of things, you've seen one year of things, right, and you get a different perspective, and you see more and more and more of these things and crazy things that pop up uh, in our city, because we have so much meandering lake shore that's.
And there'd be language for some of these extreme situations, though, to cut those down.
Call on every peninsula.
If down the road, there's not a council that's reasonable and thoughtful, you don't want somebody to be kind of hanging out the drawing either.
I think the issue, though, is we wanna get so wordy, people aren't able to find it, so they're applying, you know, um, and it's a lot of staff time for that, so I don't know.
But, but no, I'm saying, like, put a nu- put a number on it, you know, when you got something like this, this property that's backed three hundred, maybe say.
But that's a big impact, I suppose, worrying about the difficulty and say, okay, well, that's an extreme, so you don't know if that comes back in what's common sense, and you can go back, obviously, with everything online these days, you can go back over lots and lots of instances of what have you done in the past to help give, to help give guidance for people who might be new or haven't seen a lot of these things, like, because there's always things that come up that you wouldn't say eight years, I, that I haven't seen either, you know, because you have this weird, meandering, different property, people are tearing down all the time.
Yeah, good examples in there.
Just to throw one out there, I think, uh, Laura said at the beginning, um, right now, we look at the, a number of three different things, the, uh, the hardcover, the average lake shore, and the seventy-five, uh, any, again, just starting out there for discussion, any thoughts of if you meet the seventy-five, or instead of being the most restrictive, the least restrictive, so if you meet the seventy-five, then we don't even worry about the average lake shore setback, vary seventy-five feet back.
Mine's basically, do you agree with that?
Well, but a lot of times when, actually, in, in certain neighborhoods, um, I'm thinking of the, um, Crystal Bay neighborhood, everybody is worried of the seventy-five, and then it will come into more play, because then you have a, a neighborhood where.
Yeah, I'm sure it's short, it's the.
It is, it is the defining, is the defining.
Building envelope, because the whole lots are almost within the seventy-five.
We have so many exceptions that you could put in, you could almost have exceptions for.
Every neighborhood, you know.
I mean, you go to Skagginist Point, you know, and that whole, everybody going around the whole thing, all their houses are all zero to seventy-five. Because they're all right against the water, and the road is probably seventy-five feet away, um, because it's on the backside of the house, you know, that kind of thing too, so.
Well, that's why I'm saying one of the options to consider would be, okay, well, if you meet the seventy-five, then we don't worry about the average lake shore setback, if we don't, then the average lake shore setback is what we will use.
It only comes into play if you're building something within the seventy-five?
I don't realize I'm throwing something that wasn't one of the options in there, but just in there.
So, yeah, because bottom line, it would flow with the lake shore anyway.
And it would help the peninsula, like in that one, where, I mean, losing a neighbor isn't necessarily fair there.
Yeah. Yeah, I could come to, because basically the goal of it is, is to keep, keep property back a certain amount to preserve the lake. Now, the requirement is, CNR is at fifty, right?
CNR's at fifty, our shoreline ordinance has a seventy-five because of our, I think we worked out some hardcover stuff with them when we first adopted our hardcover.
Right.
Yeah.
But if we did something like Adam's proposing, I think it would cut out, you know, a lot of variance requests.
If you, if you meet the seventy-five and you meet the hardcover, maybe it's another way. You know, I'm not saying let's do that, that might be supply.
For another activity like this.
Yes, let's, we could do some analysis on that.
That can be a study, no, I think that would be a good study, because, you know, when you're going around the lake, you know, the goal is to have them farther enough away from the lake, so you're not interfering or polluting the water.
You could get in neighborhoods where everybody has got a really good line down, everybody's a hundred feet back, and so now somebody meets it and they're like, boom, I'm at seventy-five, because I can do that, everybody's gonna start moving up to seventy-five because now, you know, so it creates, I think, when you solve one thing, you kind of create another one, and I don't know what the, what, what, what's the reason we create.
But maybe the problem, like, like Adam said, though, it's the combination of the seventy-five plus making the hardcover calculation. So that they won't necessarily need, be able to necessarily go forward if they're in violation of the hardcover calculation.
Well, I think it'd be worth putting down a few.
It'd be interesting to look at.
Well, I think it'd be worth putting down a few option A with some of the slicing and dicing a little bit, and I'd like to hear, uh, have Matt have a time to look at that a little bit, because he's a Realtor, so he's out seeing this stuff every day. I mean, we see it twice a month, but he's seeing it every day, um, so I think he'll get a little bit more feedback too, of how that, how that would impact stuff too.
Applying the average lake shore setback only if the development, or only if the project's within the seventy-five. If it meets the seventy-five and if it meets the hardcover.
Yes.
Then the average lake shore setback does not need to be applied, is what I'm hearing as an option, like there.
It would be something to put.
I'd mind to say.
Let's, let's think about it and just see what, once we think about it a little bit more, what, what other things might come out of it, say.
We could, we could go over some neighborhoods too where, oh, that'll be.
Yeah.
The potential unintended consequences.
Yeah, because, because we can't do it by neighborhood, it's gotta be, it's gotta be a uniform code.
It would be interesting too if a neighbor meant that you had to be accessible on the same road, so that would.
Yeah, because right now with our code, it's, it's a bonding.
Right.
If your property lines are a bonding, so.
But if they're not accessible by the same road, and that was no longer considered a neighbor, then we're just the end of that.
Well, that's where you start making all these weird exceptions, where they say, find the kind of weird exception versus just saying, if it's a practical difficulty, you got some weird situation, then we just resolve it at the council, we resolve it with a common sense.
I'd like to, I'd like to see what it looks like in, when you're comparing it to, you know, various addresses and see how it'll impact a neighborhood, if we did this, you know, that's what you're looking, looking at. Cause I, I think as long as the hardcover's in there, I don't know if it's.
Because I think that this is a longer conversation, this might be a whole bunch of work sessions, where we can move through different potential options and how it works, and what works for some neighbors, what doesn't, and, and then it might bring us all the way back, you know, by the time the years over to, well, let's just get rid of, you know, kind of thing, you know.
They could cut, cut out some variances that are, are necessary.
Yeah.
And bring uniformity.
If we're only applying it to projects that are within seventy-five, it would, it should eliminate quite a few variance requests, and, um, knowing that discussion about hardcover, you know, as we see, uh, developments, um, come through, you know, that twenty-five percent hardcover usually gets either, it eliminates or it's confounding for a building envelope on really small lots, um, really shrinking their buildable space, but then on large lots, it really pulls the development closer to the street, is how we see it.
The narrow, the, the larger.
Because they don't wanna spend so much hardcover on their driveways and sending their development, they wanna use that space for their house footprint and for their accessory buildings and for all their stuff that way.
And I put a lot of weight into what you guys say in terms of how it impacts our variances, because I know in the past, we have said, we've tried to do that all lunch, and we've had lots of examples, so by giving staff the flexibility to make this decision X, we're gonna eliminate twenty percent of our variances. You know, I think if we, because when all of a sudden I hear, that's really not gonna do anything, I don't wanna upset the apple cart, create a bunch of weird unintended consequences that I, so I'm not familiar with their, with no, um, versus saying if we do this for this specific, everything that's in the zero seventy-five lots, and we do it like this, and we just keep it at a staff level much easier, uh, that'll get rid of, you know, ten percent. I mean, once that, once there's a real number, because you guys see them, and you guys see the stuff that we don't see them to a extent too, right?
Yeah, that's the thing that we work with builders to make it conforming.
So it doesn't have to come to this, right?
Right. Right, exactly.
So if there's something like that, that helps that, that's, that's the stuff that I, that I say, okay, let's, let's pen to paper and let's figure that out and see if it works, because that, that's a real thing, you know? Versus, eh, it's not gonna do a whole lot, but let's start ch- chopping up a whole bunch of stuff.
I'd like to see how it, how would it, it would affect in reality, that'd be good to look at. Except it, we're not gonna rush this process, so, it's a big one.
Yeah, no, that's a big one, you know, I remember when we did all the hardcover for zero seventy-five and add that, you know, to part of your, uh, your land for percentages, that changed, that, that, that took a long time to come to that, that was a huge change. You know, and so, I mean, we've done lots of good changes, and, you know, the setbacks and the high walls, where it doesn't have to be looked as a zero to ten or zero to five or whatever, just common sense kind of stuff that just helps. So if we can find some more of those, then I'm all ears for all that stuff. But depending on you guys to say that it really is gonna do that, I mean, that's where, that's where the weight carries for me, so.
Yeah, no, I think, um, that direction of wanting to, uh, do some research, so developments within the lake setback only get the average lake shore setback applied to them. And then developments, if you meet the hardcover and the lake setback, the average lake shore setback does not apply to you. I mean, they're, they're kind of not mutually exclusive, they're, I think we have some tuning we could do within that language, and then we could bring some examples of how that looks like and what it looks like if we are applying it in different situations, both on the small lots and on large lots. Uh, so you guys can see some examples of what those two scenarios kind of look like.
And I like the color coding, that was good. Well, it was good, so, so it's each one.
Well, I think I'd have some marching orders, are there other items with the average lake shore setback that's so questions about, or? Well, I think I have some marching orders, are there other items with the average lecture setback that so questions about or?
Come here, you guys have anything else?
No, thank you.
All right.
Excellent.
All right.
It's yellow, okay? My daughter's like, I got you guys, you love yellow, and I do, and I was like, cool, I should start watching movies.